Welcome back, Jack and Brianna. Glad to have you.
refreshing, refreshing, going, going, going.
Right, because a lot of those side streets now until the end of the city, you know, back in the day, but now they're all locked off.
It's Saturday.
Yeah. Well, great. You guys have a very special day.
Yeah, you too.
Don't let it shake on you.
Sure, yes. It wasn't that hard.
Good to see you. Thank you.
I know. I know. He doesn't. I was still trying to watch you. And I'm just looking at this thing by the look of like swans. Yeah, like he doesn't. I should, I feel bad because I should probably walk with my kid and not get it.
That was it.
Yeah, it's racing. I know. Go, come on, go. No, no, go, come on, go. No, no, go, come on, go. Yeah, those chairs. We were walking. He was pretty excited.
I thought I represented.
We went shopping yesterday for warm stuff and my mom can stop and she like checks this door. She's like, oh, she's like, wait, wait, I was like, okay, I'll just stand there and go on the aisle and check this door. I didn't keep walking and catch up.
Happy birthday to Carly Fisher.
Happy birthday, Carly.
She celebrated the third anniversary of her eighteenth birthday.
That's right.
Well, there's some cake here. You gotta make sure you get some here for the big day. Are you gonna do anything special other than U M H or whatever they're doing down there every?
Uh, yeah, you know what? This, this week, I don't know why we moved it a little earlier, because we could use your school meeting, so there's like, there's like 10,000 customers on campus in addition to the 14,000 employees, so, and you're not allowed to take vacations, so like, I literally have to spend my birthday and pause for four hours.
Oh, you get to?
Yes. I took Friday off.
Good.
Customers are gone Thursday, so I'm out of there.
Just enjoy yourself. You're good.
Well, thank you. We'll come and rest.
We'll stay here.
Your own cake?
No.
Yes.
It's not official. You're a double or something. You want to stop by?
Yes.
Call this meeting to order Mount Borah area school district, Board of Education, 635. Dr. Slano was this meeting, but properly noticed.
Yes.
Excellent. Do a whole call. Joel Craven, not known as Jack Schulteck, who's nameplate.
I wonder if I can pause him.
Still here.
Did you forget his name?
Leah.
Here.
Jessica.
Sarah.
Here.
Carly.
Here.
Tom.
Here.
And myself, all accounted for. Can we stand, say, quick?
The United States of America and true republic for which is Sans, one mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Someone like to read our mission statement, open the meeting.
The Mount Borah area school district in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilling members of society.
Excellent. Thanks, Jess. Item two is our agenda minutes approval. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as stated, or would we like to pull anything out of consent for discussion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Just discussion on that. Tom, did you, are you interested?
Yes.
It is. We, we would need to pull that into a discussion item if you didn't want to touch on that.
Yeah, I, I would like to bring the financial reports into a discussion item.
Since there was one on the table, do we need to abandon that one? We need to amend the motion. Amend the motion?
Uh, move to bring the financial reports into the discussion items. I'll second that. I think it is the first one.
Yeah, you have to agree second.
I agree to advise my second.
Give an amended motion currently. Second, second from Jessica. All in favor of pulling the financial reports out into a discussion item, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll tack that in. Does that go, Dr. Slano, just first item under six?
Might I suggest, with your permission, Mr. President, we do that after Mr. Sands is out visiting, so we could make that the new letter C.
Got it. Let's lock that in.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. Excellent. And then the, our regular board minutes from August 4th, do we have a motion to approve or alter any fashion?
Motion to approve board minutes from August 4th.
Second.
Right, got a motion by Tom, second by Carly. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Dr. Slano, any citizen comments tonight?
I didn't see any.
All right. We can move right onto school news. Would you like to give, kick us off?
I'm excited. The kids are starting to come back. Families will be back, in fact, tomorrow, or, yeah, tomorrow night. Agon Baby is gonna hold their 4K drop-in night, and many of our other 4K partners will be doing likewise here over the course of the next couple of weeks. Wednesday night, I believe, is freshman family night at the high school. I think that gets underway at 6:30. A great opportunity to welcome and induct our new high school Vikings. And also, I'd like to say, we have 12 new staff members joining us, along with our mentors and mentees. We'll be having lunch with the Rotary, as well as a great opportunity just to get to know a little bit more about the Mount Borah area school district. That will be followed by all staff that come to us, a week from today, August the 25th. And then, I also wanted to recognize the wrestling club. We have a parent booster organization that has been raising money so that we can get new mats in our wrestling room, and I'm pleased to tell you that those are on their way. Last but not least, a note of congratulations to a couple of board members around the table. This morning in the mail, I received a letter from the W S B indicating that our very own Jessica and Adam have achieved Level Up status from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. They have a recognition program based upon the number of program offerings that they have. And Jessica has received a Level 3, and congratulations to Adam for having received a Level 1. How do you receive these awards? You attend W S B events. Many of you attend the state convention. You may have read in your weekly update that the W S B is hosting a regional week that's happening on September 30th, it's a Tuesday night, up in Sun Prairie by the Costco. There's a hotel, I think it's Johnny's Italian Steakhouse or something like that. Is that what, yeah? I'm there. So, I hope that you might consider joining, happens to be Jessica and Adam as well, who so far let us know that they're always really good meetings, but again, we recognize how busy you are. Those listening in, I hope that you will understand and appreciate the amount of hours that we ask our board members to participate. It's not just at these meetings, it's committee meetings, it's coming to school events, it's taking phone calls from constituents, it's quite an investment of their time, and we thank them, and we thank their families for giving them your time and talent, so, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Slano. Any school news from anyone else?
There is. The high school musical auditions are tomorrow, and this year they are doing Mary Poppins.
Oh, wow. Classic. You know, also many school news. I had a couple to add. I was able to make it over to the bus garage quick out last week. I got our transportation custodial staff and our summer crew. It's really cool to see everyone get together and having some good conversation. Did you, did you follow through? Were you the grill master? Were you one of the grill masters?
Yes, I'm pleased to say no one got sick.
It was, it was great. Nice eating Impossible Burgers even.
I got an Impossible.
I had an Impossible Burger, it did the trick. That was great. I also, I stopped by the ribbon cutting for Little Woodlands, which is that new Montessori based daycare education center that just opened up in the old vacant preschool building by Cobbers. The executive director and the owner, they've got a couple other centers in Lake Mills and Belleville, and I know they've been well received by the other 4Ks in terms of bringing a really professional approach, so they were already talking about, I talked up our 4K community partnerships, they're already, very interested in that, so I expect to reach out to the district about that soon. And I saw on the heels of your wrestling club announcement, I saw that the Monrova basketball club got together current past members to celebrate 18 years for that organization. Yeah, they, they have raised at least $150,000 in that time that they've given to school projects. And we have the backboard project that's in motion now, and the wraps on the door, things that really improve the look of the school. And it was brought up to me too, that these are, most of the time, these are projects that school needs to do anyway, so they're giving half the cost of a lot and letting us use money for further academic and extracurricular endeavors. So, makes a huge difference. Thanks for the community support. And two, two quick sports notes for me. I know we had the football open, a graft on Friday, and all this ball sport's starting up, and a big rock's in the line for our girls' program on Saturday at Miller's from 10 to 2. Great. Personal transactions. Dr. Slano, anything that you'd like to pull out?
Yes, board members, there is an addendum to tonight's board transactions that you'll note, a request that we have annually at this time of year, and asks for your thoughtful consideration of permitting the superintendent to complete hiring packets so that we can be fully staffed, comes September 2nd. Thank you.
Motion by Jessica, and a second by Sarah.
Dr. Slano, do you need action on their request to hire, or is that just a notification?
Thanks, you for asking. So, with your approval, if it's forthcoming, would be surprised.
Okay. Great. We have a motion on the table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you all for that. On our consent agenda, we just have then the approval of our existing minutes from August 4th. I'm sorry, that was the education committee, and separated from the Board of Education before. Do we have a motion to approve those? Motion to approve education committee minutes from 4th. Second. Motion by Tom, and second by Joel, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Discussion items, all of our committee and village liaisons, member reports. Carly, do you want to start us with the community and legislative engagement?
Uh, yeah, we haven't had a meeting since the last update, so there isn't a lot to report from, from the committee perspective, and we don't have anything on the books currently. I will, as you noticed, the one thing that might be worth mentioning is, was Dr. Slano put in the weekly update, is that the state legislature did introduce a bill to repeal the $325 per year revenue limit increase. I heard no, no other information or anything about where that's going, but just a heads up that that's, that that's out there, and keep an eye on whether or not that moves forward.
All right, thanks, Carly. Jessica, education committee.
Sure. I was, um, not actually at this meeting, but I will, based on the notes, share some updates. Education committee met on August 4th. The committee reviewed and discussed again the committee topics calendar for this coming school year, and I believe that was, it's all set, ready to go. They discussed policy 342.51, Title 1 Parent-Family Engagement, which is on our agenda for later. Sarah gave us curriculum updates, particularly around professional development, which we're gonna also talk about in a little while, and then grading and assessment updates and belonging work updates. The belonging work updates, I think we talked about in other meetings as well, that let us see folks now become two separate LLCs, but then we have a contract to continue some work with them. And then in terms of the grading and assessment updates, Sarah shared that we're now in year three of teachers identifying their essential learning outcomes and finalizing the related efficiency scales, which I know is a tough work for them. So, many of these things will be talking about very soon.
Great. Thanks for the preview. Was there anything, any movement on community coalition?
We did meet. We, the group only meets quarterly, so they met in July. Craig Smith from the school district was also there. The community coalition has four goals, in case you don't remember. One is childcare, housing, business recruitment, and workforce development. Workforce development is obviously the one that the school is most closely involved with. They shared that in terms of childcare, it's really no longer an issue with the opening of the new centers, we don't have a shortage that we used to, so now they're just supporting marketing, advertising, making sure people are aware of what their options are. Housing, we talked about the variety of different housing developments that are happening, multifamily, luck and farm, there's even talk about a new townhome development that's gonna possibly have between 100 and 300 townhomes. In terms of business recruitment, it was shared that there is more interest than we have space in terms of downtown. And then for workforce development, Craig talked about that he is working at creating a system similar to Handshake. If you know about Handshake, it's like a way that students can interact with employers, a lot of colleges have it. So, make sort of a local version of that, that students can work on and can use it. I believe it's stat, is that what, is that the right?
That's right.
Yeah. So, that sounded great, and we will meet again until October.
Good. Thanks, thanks for the report. And I, I don't have any significant updates from the Monrova liaison, village Monrova liaison. One thing I touch on is just kind of continued focus on affordable housing and recognition of, meet that supply of housing stock if we're gonna keep our momentum up as a district, and that is very much on the minds of the village board, so glad that we have that uncoordinated communication with them. Thanks for being there through that three-legged stool with the business community to really important these relationships. Excellent. Dr. Slano, do we have Ryan Sands on the line?
He's just coming in now.
Fantastic. We can do our long-range facility planning with our friends at Bray.
Good evening, Ryan. How are you today? Let me just turn on my volume here. If it's okay with you, I'd like to record this. Would that be our view?
Sure.
Okay, terrific. Good evening, board members. Here is a very good friend to the Mount Borah area school district, this is Mr. Ryan Sands. Ryan is the vice president and chief architect of our program, our audition. So, Ryan, as you each month, tell us, what have you been up to?
Thanks, Steve, and thanks for having me. Good evening, everyone. We'll start, as we typically do, with a quick look at the schedule. We are on schedule. We've shifted into construction documents on the primary center addition, and are starting to work further on the overall district-wide improvements. Coming up in a little, over a month, we'll work through the general contractor prequalification process in preparation for bidding of projects at the start of 2026. As a reminder, these are our three phases of the design schedule. We're just a little ways into construction documents now, but getting into more detail. I'm excited to share some of the process around finalizing our material palettes with you a little later this evening, and then we're really heavy into coordination with engineers and some of the more granular, granular detail within the project. We're also working through local approvals, so we met with the Village of Mount Borah Historic Preservation Commission and Plan Commission on July 23rd, just a couple days after our update last month. Both of those meetings went really well. I think generally we received positive feedback from both groups on the exterior design and the overall direction of the site plan, you know, a couple comments and questions to work through, which is expected at this preliminary phase, but I think good signs across the board with both groups as far as moving forward and preparing for a more formal submission later this year. We've also continued our staff engagement, and we're excited as, as teachers come back from summer break to reengage with a couple of groups, including the primary center subcommittee. We have a meeting scheduled with coming up, and we'll have a couple of additional user group engagements as well. From a design update this evening, no major changes to the site plan or floor plans, but we have them in the presentation for reference in case they're beneficial with any questions. As far as the Plan Commission and Historic Preservation Commission feedback, based on both of those discussions going well, we're furthering our work towards finalizing the exterior material palette, as well as our work on the site plan with our civil engineer. I would say some of the areas that remain to be finalized, there's some work related to the grade change along the west side of the existing building, the additions, we're looking at some different options for how to do the grade change there, with the likely need for some ramping in certain areas, and then finalizing some options to discuss with the core planning team around responding to our broader district goal of implementing some safety measures at the entries in the form of potentially bollers or planters or those types of things to create some additional barriers. I'm gonna jump through the floor plans, and we can go back to those if there are any questions later. The main thing we wanted to provide an update on this evening is the interior design concept and our progress around selecting interior finishes and further developing the interior architecture for both the addition and the renovations. And as our team was digesting the feedback that we received during our preliminary interior design finish presentation, some of our takeaways were a desire for a palette that was rooted in more natural or neutral colors and tones, and the desire for a zen feel within the building, trying to create a sense of calm and belonging. So, we looked at, we looked at options and developed a motif and a palette that responded to that feedback, while still finding ways to root it within the Mount Borah community. So, as we did that, we looked at a couple of elements that led us to some natural elements, colors, tones, materials, looking at the Norwegian heritage within the area, and how that correlates from kind of a geographic and a natural element perspective to some of the features that you have in the Mount Borah area and surrounding communities, so in the case of this example, looking at the Sugar River Valley. So, then as we get into the building, and please keep in mind that none of these are intended to be literal, but more so trying to build a story or motif behind some of the architectural and interior design decisions, to connect the project to the community, provide a story that hopefully resonates with students, teachers, and community members. And so, as we looked at the different elements within nature and the Norwegian heritage, one of the first ones was thinking about the river and the role that it plays from a natural standpoint as far as circulation, both as a means and also a lot of circulation paths often follow rivers. So, looking at that as both a form, an opportunity from a material color and application standpoint, and then how we could apply that to our circulation within the buildings, looking at hallways and other forms of circulation, and centering it around kind of blues and blue-gray neutral colors. Another element that we explored was the cave, so this is prevalent in Norwegian heritage and geography, and you have the Cave of the Mountains locally, and caves often are formed by and are often off of rivers. So, for the caves, again, looking at pulling some neutral tones, and then thinking about the cave as a representation for different gathering spaces within the building. So, some of our small group gathering spaces, our classrooms, collaboration spaces, the libraries, so what are our academic gathering spaces, and how can we use this to imbue some of those colors, tones, and treatments into some of those spaces? And then the idea of, from a macro level, within the building, those gathering spaces along a path or along our river element. And when we look at the idea of feel, thinking about what happens in, or what can happen in those areas, you're growing food, having festivals, feasts, and so looking at that as some inspiration for our cafeteria space, looking at vertical elements, the ceiling, the lane, as well as the flooring. And then finally, thinking about kind of the grove as a democratic gathering space, a civic space where meetings and other public activities might take place, and so thinking about that as our gymnasium, so looking at... some of our takeaways were a desire for a palette that was rooted in more natural or neutral colors and tones, and the desire for a zen feel within the building, trying to create a sense of calm and belonging. So we looked at, we looked at options and developed a motif and a palette that responded to that feedback while still finding ways to root it within the Mount Hora community. So as we did that, we looked at a couple of elements that led us to some natural elements, colors, tones, materials, looking at the Norwegian heritage within the area and how that correlates from a geographic and a natural element perspective to some of the features that you have in the Mount Hora area and surrounding communities. So in the case of this example, looking at the Sugar River Valley. So then as we get into the building, and please keep in mind that none of these are intended to be literal, but more so trying to build a story or motif behind some of the architectural and interior design decisions to connect the project to the community, provide a story that hopefully resonates with students, teachers, and community members. And so as we looked at the different elements within nature and the Norwegian heritage, one of the first ones was thinking about the river and the role that it plays from a natural standpoint as far as circulation, both as a means and also a lot of circulation paths often follow rivers. So looking at that as both a form, an opportunity from a material color and application standpoint, and then how we could apply that to our circulation within the buildings, looking at hallways and other forms of circulation, and centering it around blues and blue-gray neutral colors. Another element that we explored was the cave. So this is prevalent in Norwegian heritage and geography, and you have the Cave of the Mounds locally. And caves often are formed by and are often off of rivers. So for the caves, again, looking at pulling some neutral tones, and then thinking about the cave as a representation for different gathering spaces within the building. So some of our small group gathering spaces, our classrooms, collaboration spaces, the library, so what are our academic gathering spaces, and how can we use this to imbue some of those colors, tones, and treatments into some of those spaces? And then the idea of, from a macro level, within the building, those gathering spaces along a path or along our river element. And when we look at the idea of feel, thinking about what happens in, or what can happen in those areas, you're growing food, having festivals, feasts, and so looking at that as some inspiration for our cafeteria space, looking at vertical elements, the ceiling lane, as well as the flooring. And then finally, thinking about kind of the grove as a democratic gathering space, a civic space where meetings and other public activities might take place. And so thinking about that as our gymnasium, so looking at some of the colors and tones, some of the treatment that we're planning with the rock climbing wall and other activities and elements in there, thinking about bringing in daylights, and then again, some of those natural tones, now looking at the greens and grays, as well as opportunities to infuse our Mount Hora red in this space. So this is how some of that inspiration translates to our finish palette or our digital interior finish board, if you will. So looking at some of our caseworks and countertops, infusing the warmth of a light wood tone. Similarly, in some of our ceiling planes, using again the neutral gray and some wood, bringing in that warmth. A flooring palette in our carpet that is largely rooted in a few tones of grays with colored accents in strategic areas, both from a overall accent material perspective, tying in with some of the tones with those different natural elements, as well as for use in wave binding between the first and second floor. Some darker neutrals in some of our high-traffic areas, so walk-up carpet for our vastabials and kinetic flooring in our cubby area. And then a range of colors, again, largely using the neutrals in the middle with some pops of color in our homogeneous vinyl tile or HBT flooring. And then paint colors, again, tying in with some of those natural elements and that motif, and strategically infusing some Mount Hora red. So here you can see how some of those natural elements relate to the material selections. So the blues and blue grays relating to the river, some, again, neutral tones for our core flooring, bringing in some of the warmth with the woods and some of our darker colors when we look at the caves. And then infusing some of our greens and blues when we look at the grove and the field. So the exciting next steps will be developing these further in three dimensions. So we have some preliminary views ready for a meeting with the Primary Center Subcommittee coming up on the 28th. So we're excited to review this interior finish information and some of the 3D views with that group to garner feedback from staff, further develop those views, and bring those back for the board next month. I mentioned before that construction documents are underway, and in addition to the interior design, we'll be continuing to refine and define the exterior design of the building, including detailing. We're continuing to engage with engineers and consultants. And as I mentioned before, we'll be submitting to the Village of Mount Hora formally, likely this fall. As you may or may not be aware, the village is going through a change to the zoning ordinance. And so we are hoping that we can hold off on submitting it until they adopt that, and then ours, so we don't coincide with the new zoning ordinance. In addition, we have a meeting scheduled in, I think, the second, yeah, the second week of September, September 10th, with all the building principals and members of the admin team to go through some of those security measures we talked about, potentially bollards or other elements, all of the buildings in the district. As far as some of the individual spaces within the Primary Center Edition renovation, we're really honing in on the kitchen design and the serveri. And so that's getting really close. We've got a couple of details to work out, and we're planning to follow up on that during our core planning team meeting this week, mainly around the flow and the point of sale for the students as they flow from the corridor through the serveri into the cafeteria. We've also had a lot of conversations around floor striping and accommodations within the gym. So furthering the detail related to documenting those and make sure, making sure we have everything to accommodate the PE classes for our K2 students, as well as broader district and community use. And then, I think, Steve, you wanted to maybe hit on some of the information related to the school name and some of the work that you guys are doing at the district level to support the product development.
Yeah, thank you for that, Ryan. Principal Johnson has done a really super job of garnering feedback from our faculty and staff in the ELC and PLC. And so what we'd like to do is we'd like to now open the door to our community. And so we'll be sending out a survey that will accompany the board recap tomorrow, encouraging people to respond by September 12th. Welcome submissions from our young people, as well as from our parents and adults, and we'll come to some consensus, I'm sure, at some point soon. And Ryan, I want to extend a note of gratitude to you and your team for unveiling yourselves on a number of occasions. For example, we've got some last-minute discussion pieces around, as you mentioned, the cafeteria, and you're making time for that to happen on Thursday at noon. Ryan and his team are also going to be visiting virtually with the local building design team, our faculty and staff, to take these color schemes and then apply it then to the actual models of the schools. And that's where it starts to come to life. And we can't wait to show that to you and get their feedback. That's happening, as Ryan mentioned, on the 28th at 12:30 in the afternoon. It's a virtual meeting, and if you'd like to be a part of that, by all means, you're welcome. Let me know, and I'd be happy to put out a meeting notice so that we're operating in the sunshine when it comes to court board requirements. And then I think our next meeting, Ryan, full meeting, is that next Thursday?
We have one, we have one this Thursday and another this Thursday, two weeks.
Time flies when we're having fun, okay? Yeah, this Thursday, and that one will be virtually as well. So again, we've got board members, and by the way, anyone who's listening in the community, those are open to the public and happy to observe. Super job, Ryan. Thank you so very much for all you're doing.
Thanks, Steve. I'm happy to take any questions if there are any.
I have a question. So you mentioned zoning. Are we in compliance with the current zoning? If they don't change the zoning rule, the zoning stuff is very contentious right now. And so just wondering, where on the scale are we going to fall? Are we compliant if it doesn't change?
I've been visiting with Nick on this quite a bit, and we're going to be just fine.
Yeah, either way, we, either way, we would be able to, I think, successfully implement the plan that you see and that we've been working towards. It's just a matter of the steps we need to take to be compliant with our submission. Currently, all your schools are zoned residential because there isn't currently an institutional zoning within the zoning ordinance. So that requires, you know, specific, some middle typically referred to as a conditional use permit because of your, you know, using it for something other than residential, inter-residential zoning. That's not uncommon for schools. And so, and it's something we worked through in the previous projects at the middle school and high school. So we've been in conversations with the village and their staff around what we would need to do. If they don't adopt a new zoning ordinance before we need to submit, or what we would do if they do. So I think either way, we're in good shape to get the project approved.
Anyone else have any thoughts on Ryan?
It's going to be a beautiful residence.
That is too much.
Great. Ryan, thanks, and Dr. Slerno too, and the whole admin team for prioritizing the input from faculty and staff on this one, too, really letting them drive a lot of that process. It seems like you're doing the right balance between giving clear options, but not making it feel like it's been too baked so that their opinion doesn't factor in. So thanks for that.
Yeah, you're welcome. We're excited to hear their feedback, so.
Well, Ryan, you've got some young kids. You go home and have a great night. We look forward to seeing you in a couple of days.
Thank you. Everyone else have a great night there, too. Thanks. Bye.
Thanks, Ryan. All right, six P or, I'm sorry, six C, do we need, is this where we slotted in our financial report, right?
Yes, definitely. We asked, have Mr. Schmuckin offer his thoughts?
Yeah. So we get this financial report every, for every board meeting, and usually we just kind of pass them through. And I just wanted to pull out just a few things that I saw this month, and I say thank you to the public, and then also thank you to all the staff that worked so hard and had the forethought to have things budgeted and in place, things that need to be done on a yearly basis or bi-yearly, I guess. For instance, in this, this week's financial report, there was some sidewalk repair that could be done. A new lawnmower, if anybody has lawn right now, they know how often they have to mow before the rain. So it's, it's just things that have to be purchased and fixed. And one other thing is the gym floors at some of the schools, the IC and high school were refinished this year. And it's just kind of continual costs that the district has to take care of. And just a thank you out to the, you know, to the public and then all the staff that take care of all the stuff. So that's really all I wanted to pull out.
That's a good call out.
Yeah, thanks, Tom.
May I?
Please.
Just for anyone who is listening, we do approve these obviously whenever they come up, but whoever is the treasurer, just so people know, goes line by line with Scott to make sure everything is accurate. So it is getting very close attention.
That's the highlight of our bi-weekly meeting.
That's great.
That's a lot of time, Joel. Pardon me. Grateful for that. Joel, I know that you've been doing some homework on the lawnmower in particular. Word has it was 15 years old and...
Yeah, they, they got a bunch of bids and they found a heck of a deal on it. Dave did. So he, he did a lot of homework on it. And apparently, buying this new lawnmower guarantees a winning season.
Oh, yeah.
So that's, that's what I heard. That's what Dave told. So.
Dave is the voice on Friday.
I know.
I mean, he can call it however he wants.
No, apparently, the, yeah, the machine was 15 years old and finding parts for it and things was really, really challenging. So and, and I know Dave had, he mentioned a few different lawnmowers they looked at, a few different places they looked. This was one of those, does all the same things, but for a really good price, so.
That's great. Thanks for calling. These items are for discussions and background. Backstory and how we monitor all the purchases behind the scenes. Important to note, because I know that we do go through business pretty quickly at this level of board level. All right, on this six C or information and advocacy report, individual, academic, social, and emotional supports, Ryan Johnson.
A quick phone call.
Yes.
Because we pulled it out of consent agenda, but now we only put it in discussion, we can't, don't we, we're going to have to approve it? When? How do we approve it now? Because normally, we approve it as part of...
It should have been an action item. That's my mistake, and I apologize. I wonder if it might be helpful for us to either A, bring it back, or C, if there's a motion to consider reapproval of the agenda, subject, we may get an action item.
A motion to move the financial report to an action item so we can approve it, please. Thank you.
Second.
All right, motion by Tom, second by Carly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, move that to action. Sorry for that mistake. Thank you. Good call out.
So she's like, don't make it through, but...
Who was that? Boo, I'm sorry. Tom and Carly. Thank you. All right, Brian?
Yeah, so this is, this is always a fun report because it really gets to kind of focus on the whole child. And it's a moment, an opportunity to really kind of brag on the whole student services team. We hear from each of them kind of individually, but when you put the collective together, right, our social workers, our school counselors, and our school psychologists, all of the work that's really being done to really focus on the whole childhood. So we do focus a little bit on some of the numbers of students with disabilities. You can see that those, where those are at, and then really kind of focus on the three different areas. The pictures are really, throughout the whole document, tell its own story, and those are purposeful. And so this first one is really of probably the most important initiative that we've done in a really long time, and that is incorporating sources of strength into our middle and high school. We've talked a little bit about it, but it's really, we've, we've been trying to find for a long time a peer mentorship program that doesn't have peers give therapy or advice to students, but have peers give permission to seek help, right? And peers to be able to promote a positive mental health culture, and peers being able to do initiatives around the school that promote physical health and mental health, and supports in all of those pieces. And our student services staff, I've done a lot of my observations of them during these meetings because they're so fun, because they need to just facilitate the work that the kids are doing. And the kids are coming together and forming committees and advocacy and this initiative and how to do the, you know, all of the different components. And it's really, it's really fun to watch. This was kind of brought to us and it kind of goes into us after May 1st, right? How do we continue to build belonging? How do we continue to build community? And how do we kind of create a culture that's acceptance of seeking mental health support when we need it? And this has done a really positive job of that. So, so that kind of, that's picture number one, right? And then it really, and if you go outside, right, right out of our building, if you walk out that door, you can see the welcoming. And that's what, it's about how do we build our culture and how do we build belonging? And it's not an initiative or a setup, it's just in every building. And this is a prime example, this picture of it. This whole section kind of goes into what are some of our numbers, where are we at? And our numbers, as typical, right, our whole district is dropping in overall numbers. And we did see a little drop in our students with disabilities from this past year. But what's always kind of interesting to me is looking at, again, are who are our kids with a primary disability? So these, just because on the next slide it says, there's only 69 students with speech and language in our district, that's just their primary disability. It doesn't mean it's their secondary disability, and it doesn't mean it's their related service. So it means that there's three levels of kids who might be receiving speech and language services, but this is their primary disability. And we can see the different components, our highest three categories, and really four categories, our autism, individual health impairment, learning disability, and speech and language. And then we kind of spatter some of our stuff, right? And that kind of goes through it in terms of hearing and vision and some other components. And that's why you kind of see it even today, right? There was, we're going through CISA for some of our services when we don't need a full-time person within our staff, but we need a little bit of it. So that's where we go from there. The other piece that's really the biggest jump in numbers, so I don't know if we've gone through it, or if you, if you know who headed this piece, but for a student to qualify for an IEP, they have to answer two questions. One, do they have a disability? And two, do they... One, do they have a disability? And two, do they need specially designed instruction to be able to help, be able to facilitate for the disability, right? If you have a 504 plan, it means I have a diagnosed disability, but I need accommodations within the classroom to support. I don't need the specially designed instruction. And what we're really seeing is that those numbers are really increasing quite a bit. And so I, I'm running above the hordeage, but this year we were at 96 students with 504 plans, and while last year we were at 83. So that's an area we're seeing a pretty significant increase on. And so when you combine those two areas, though, even though our students with disabilities in the IEP have decreased a little bit, it's increased, which means that we still have disability, the same amount of kids about in our classroom with disabilities, but maybe need different, different things to be successful with in our classrooms.
Ryan, are there ever kids that have an IEP that would switch to a 504?
Yeah, quite a bit.
Quite a bit?
So, and then we kind of go down, and then this kind of gets into all of the stuff that we're doing, right? There's, there's the tier one, tier two, and tier three, the multi-level systems of support, where we do a lot of initiatives that are for every kid. It's just the good practices that we're doing on a daily basis. And then there's another group, a smaller group of kids that need more targeted intervention. And then there's, and that's tier two. And then there's tier three, which is even less kids, but they need really specific targeted intervention, even maybe more intensely. And so, right, the, the service dogs are now becoming tier one intervention. They're in our buildings. They're supporting all kids whenever they need it. However, some kids might have it scheduled in their day, in their week, but it's more of a targeted intervention as well so they can be used in multiple different steps. So it just kind of talks about a lot of the stuff that we've done this year throughout supporting students. And if we go to the picture again, right, it feels always so, it's hard to believe like we did so much, right? But like Katie Berg did a whole presentation this January. Aaron Slinger is doing a lot of the adult interactions with, with mental health and wellness activities, working with the PBIS system as a whole. DPI just hired a functional behavioral assessment coach. And so we'll be, we're already talking with her about coming in and doing staff training coming up in the future. And then the picture below, which is our four-tiered system, like some of the, the stuff, the poetry, keep everyone, everyone's welcome and belonging, right? The really belonging initiative is our district. We started the year with training for our staff and training for families on enhancing resilience with the U.S. Department of Education. Dr. Solinger already, or led a great community discussion around the anxious generation, kind of on the community standard for technology and, and how we support kids in the district. And then you go to a social worker and a teacher and, and IC collecting. They collect so much stuff. I'm not quite sure what's in the picture, but they've done shoes, they've done clothing, they've done Christmas gifts. Like, it's just constantly supporting families that need additional support. And then every year at this time, like the student services staff members look at all of the work that they've done and add and subtract to this document. And does it fall in the academic area, the social area, or emotional area? And kind of the good initiatives and work that's done in each building. As you can, you see, there's a lot. It's exciting.
It gets at that belonging, doesn't it? It's really trying, yeah. So that's what I've got. Any questions or discussion from page five, Ryan?
Just a, it's incredibly impressive. And can you tell your team that we're grateful for them?
Yeah, that's eight pages of activity.
Yeah.
I had to write eight pages in high school. I just gave up.
I just, I'm particularly, I mean, I go all of that, and I just love the approach of, like you said, we lean into everything, the culture, whether, you know, it's the teachers doing the work, the, your team doing the work.
How many dogs do we have now?
Three.
Okay.
So we have...
I was just gonna say, I don't believe that they've all been here for show or talk.
Because our, we've got the, the, the trouble, of course, and then our speech and language pathologist at our kindergarten level, who brings her dog to school, and then I have Ruby, and then the IC comes once or twice per...
Complicate, get around all the buildings.
It's funny, you might hurt anything.
Yeah.
And I do have to say, I've heard great community feedback on that stuff. Parents whose kids have benefited from hanging out with somebody that's a little happier than the parents are.
It's a nice welcome in school, especially a lot of days from here. In February, right, you come in and there's a happy dog, right? Rises your shirt right off the bat.
We'll have to bring them on, I know. Ryan, sources of strength.
Yeah.
How many, how many kids are involved in that right now? And how did you find like recruiting that next batch of kids on the second cycle ago?
Yeah, so they haven't started the second cycle recruiting yet, but they really, so how you kind of started out is you hand select. So they hand selected the first group from a student services team and seeking feedback from teachers. And then they'll start spreading the word. Now that you got, then they built your base, and then you, then you start inviting other students to be involved. And that will start this upcoming year.
Got it.
So it'll be in the media announcements and advertisements all around.
Good. Any other questions, discussion? Ryan?
Okay.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, move on to our next topic, other information and advocacy report, two or three, professional development of staff, Sarah Straka. Oh, you get two of them in around here, huh?
Yeah, and I have three tonight. So mine are shorter, so this is, this will be a good balance. So looking at the professional development review, so you all can see we're moving forward from 25, 26 school year. They have a combination of, I won't say old, but current, and then new. I'm just gonna point out some of the newer pieces that we have. So for the education thing, we talked often about some changes and looking at curriculum and resources over middle school. So the second and third lines, those there are, are those pieces for ELA and for math. So we do have pilot training for students who need teachers. They will be implementing amplified ELA, grade six through eight, the first quarter for sure. And then also, in grades six through eight, we have, we have a square implementation. So teachers have been receiving their training and, and from school year as well. Those are two good examples of just newer pieces we're moving forward, whether in pilot or full implementation. And teachers did have, just had their trainees and we're writing the board recap as well the past couple weeks. So that's been great. We also have some more individualized targeted training for staff. So the fourth line item is a good example of that. So Julie Jones is our key to math interventionist. And she's been talking with Brian and myself about how do we bring more math expertise, particularly intervention expertise, to our special education staff. So she's going to be working with five elementary teachers in the 25, 26 school year, and then the other five special ed teachers in the 26, 27 school year, to really dig deep into math recovery training, very, very intense math instruction for students who just aren't moving the needle, really need to go to a student degree level. So that's a combination of really release days and some other pieces that Julie will be working with our staff. And she's also going through trainer training herself. So she has to implement the training she's receiving during these next two years, which is a huge cost savings for us to have an expert in the house. Otherwise, we do have some similar pieces. So for example, in the middle, we have instructional coaching support for our instructional coaches, or we have co-teaching support as well, co-planting, co-teaching, if you want down. A larger piece for our school district is somewhat in the middle. It's called the School Administrators Institute for Transformational Leadership, or SAEL is the acronym. And the board is real good sale a little bit. And you'll hear more actually at our board workshop in September. But that's a larger group of staff members participating in that, all of our building level teams and our district's level team as well. So there's just some highlights. I was trying to remind my line, but there's some highlights for you all as to some of the bigger rocks or bigger events that we have going on throughout the districts.
Not to mention Viking Voyage Week this week.
Yeah, this week. Yes, we had some trainees, like kind of a crisis intervention trainings. We have our C K L A trainer. She is stuck in DC right now, but she is coming tomorrow, hopefully, tomorrow and Wednesday, Thursday, to work with grade level teams on implementation of that resource. We have our staff welcome. We have EDI training today. We had standards based grading training today. So we have a lot of things targeted to specific staff members to various. Yeah, so that's our shorter information advocacy sheet, chart. Yeah, just a glimpse. Ready for the next one, Adam?
Yeah, let's go on to it.
Okay, great. So another shorter report looking at some of the innovative, innovative or research-based work that we're doing in the school district. Last year, we had a very similar advocacy report. And this report is, is I set an extension of this, where we're gonna, where we're taking the work that's, for example, that Intermedia Center did, even all our buildings did this work, and one highlight, one building, mind teacher clarity, and really working through how we are making sure students understand what their learning intention is for the day, for the lesson, and then how they're gonna be successful. The way we measure that was through walkthroughs and asking students all three questions. What are you learning today? Why are you learning? And how do you know when you learned it, or how will you be assessed? And we collected that data. So the example we have here, they said is from the Intermedia Center. And I think over the year, they've done about 111 walkthroughs. Is that the number on the first? Yeah, 111 walkthroughs. They did over, over the course of the whole year, so three or four data collection periods, trying to understand our kids really understanding what we're giving them is really sticky, but what we're throwing at them. And overall, we want to make sure kids have a full understanding and communicate what they're doing. So figure one is a great example of that. When we say what they're doing, it's not necessarily like, oh, we're doing a worksheet, or, oh, we're doing this activity. It's going to the core, like what is the skill or content that they're supposed to know? And to answer that correctly, that's what we're standing across. So that's, that's a good sign that sticking at least for that lesson. Great. The figure two, three, four, that look at those questions over the lifetime, so the past two years of our work. So figure two looks at that what question again. Over time, you can see we've had a growth. It's gone up and down depending on the year, or the year and the time of year. Figure three looks at that why question, why are we learning? Which is a little tougher. I think for many of us, we don't know why we do things sometimes, right? But we want kids to understand the why behind the what. And then the third, sorry, the fourth figure then is the how they're showing they're learning. So how do they know how, how, like how are they gonna be assessed, or what are they gonna show when they're done? That's also tough for kids, but overall throughout, we know that's gotten better. And then at least half the students when asked can respond to that. So we see these as successful pieces. Walkthrough is having a new for our staff, you know, having a colleague come into your space and observe you, right? It's, it's a newer thing for us, but we're gonna continue this work into something called SAEL. And within SAEL, you learn more, like I said at the board workshop, about how our teams are coming together to set building level goals, continue the work that we started, but continue to look at that more than academic data piece moving forward. We also have coaching throughout the year. So our coaches come in monthly, but then we also come back together as a school district with the other two, two school districts we visited with in November and March for a little more, more about their scale learning. Like I said, we'll, we'll provide more checkings throughout the year, especially at your summer workshop.
The questions were several.
I think it's really good data and information. I would be just curious on the topics that were asked at each time point, if it was kind of similar, you know, it'd be easier to track, maybe, but...
When you say topics, can you tell me more?
Um, yeah, so unless I'm clear, if it was a reading lesson or a math lesson, or a science lesson, you know, try to be more specific. Just to try to see what correlates to what they might be.
Interesting, yeah. Trying to think back in, in our walkthrough tool. I don't know, trying to think, we do collect the contents or the type of learning going on. We do have, have found that part of the graph, basically, yeah.
It's interesting to see the differences like in each of these and the time of the year and how they're, you know what I mean?
How, how attentive they are at that point.
Yeah.
Sound of research.
Well, even, well, even too, like, like with the graphs, just in how they differ, like, okay, they're understanding this month, they're really understanding what they're learning, but not so much why or vice, you know, vice versa, that always goes up and down.
Or maybe emphasize your team, in this example, if IC saw the lower data on the why, then they emphasize it more. That just swings it back.
Sure.
Then you have to, it all happens, really focused on one thing more.
Sure.
Well, and to touch point, you might be able to articulate why maybe something in like reading versus math. I don't know why I have to learn algebra. I just know what I do, right? Like, those are human...
I learn multiplication, right? Some of those ones, some like, so they might do, right? A squared plus B squared equals C squared. When have I used it? But I know it!
So you use the word innovative at the beginning for, I don't want to talk about this, but are there other districts that have done something like this? Can you give me a little bit of history on this?
Yeah, yeah.
So I understand that.
Yeah, walkthroughs, you want specific school districts? So there's a school districts and, and a conference high school has, has gone through a sales process to look at instructional practices, teacher practices based on student data. And they, they bring their walkthrough team in. It's a larger walkthrough team for a full day. And they go to different classrooms to look at themes of potential growth. And then they use that data and share it with staff. And then they talk through what kind of practices we want to highlight, what kind of practices do we want to change. So walkthroughs are pretty kind of practice. It's just newer and not core.
So is the, is the intended outcome to...
Collective advocacy would, would be a piece that, that's either self-centered or, or out there as well.
No, that's, that's, that's what I was looking for. So I was trying to figure out this data and its usage ultimately for you guys.
And the, and the teacher clarity piece. Are we all on the same page as to what we are truly wanting to teach as an activity, or is it an actual skill and content and knowledge? We want to make sure we're all on the same page on it. So the grade level teams, they, they plan and talk through that. That's where the learning intentions and success criteria come in. Hey, guys, in, in Monday, we want to make sure when we're teaching this math lesson on multiplication, that's the what. We want to make sure students understand the why, and then how are we gonna assess that, and then bring that data back to our team and talk through. That's that teacher clarity piece. But then also that collective teacher advocacy piece. We're all moving forward in the same direction of the pieces. So that's the research part of that piece.
And correct me if I'm wrong, this came out of like, I want to say five plus years ago, where we had, we did have parents saying, you know, my kid is in English one with this teacher, and my kid is in... teacher, and my kid is in English one with that teacher, and then completely different lessons, completely, so this was.
We're much tighter now.
Yeah, it's a way to kind of align it, so that everybody's getting the same.
Class of A and C should have the same.
And also, let it sound beautifully, the evidence base grid, because we've identified what evidence we need to have, and then how we need to.
It's all supposed to come together, it's just, it's just at one point, people see it, but yeah.
Director Strachan has done a marvelous job of really trying to vision how to develop the board power goal around student growth, and I can't wait for you to be a part of the conversation that we'll have on September 29th, and the work of our teachers and our administrators earlier in August. It gets to that, and that's really the next step, the next, kind of evolution of growing towards the vision we're establishing. Thank you for setting the point, and I'm really excited for you to hear about the how and offer your feedback on it.
One quick question. I know the goal is to get 100, obviously, on all of those, but this is really, you're just looking to keep that, the line going up, up, up on this?
Yeah. I believe with the IC, I think their goal is getting close to the impossible.
Okay.
So, sometimes they hit it, sometimes they're close. There's always improvement.
What do you think's the easiest or hardest of these two influence for kids?
The three questions?
Yeah.
I think one is pretty easy, two, I think two and three can be more difficult, but it also depends, how close to that assessment, is it an assessment that they, is it an assessment that they?
And for three?
Those kinds of pieces. I didn't think the why, these kinds of words is hard to, to back our heads around. Why am I doing that? I'm learning algebra. The algebra teachers can answer that, but the nuances within there, you have to build such a different language, that's all. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry, I get locked out of that machine. There we are, to our action items. Where do we want to slide the financials?
Thank you. If we wouldn't mind doing that right now, that sure, if you got it right off the top. Great, we will revisit then the financial report that came out. If there's any motion to approve that, except that this time.
What's your opinion?
Second by Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks for covering some of that. Interesting. The existing 7A, that is the second reading of revisions to Board Policy 113, equal educational opportunity, sexual harassment, and sex-based nondiscrimination in educational programs or activities, here in Esler and Front John's.
This is a second reading, so I'm not sure, we kind of went through all of it last time. Do you have any additional questions?
I will make a motion to approve. I would.
I will second that.
Got a motion, a second by Sarah. Any further discussion from this group? All right, now I'll call for a vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any opposed? Nobody. Motion passes. Thanks for coming down.
In terms of these seats.
Right, and the first reading of Policy 342.5, Title I Programs and Parent and Family Engagement, referred by education, Sarah Strachan's back.
I'm just going to, so, sorry, just a second please. Okay. So, yeah, obviously, 342.5, Title I, Parent and Family Engagement, so, A change is obviously the title. We wanted to make sure that the parents and family engagement portion of the policy was more pronounced, because there are many federal guidelines that we really need to follow. So, rather than having two separate policies, we thought since we already have parent and family engagement within this policy, we would have set up and make sure that was highlighted in the title. Along with that, other updates centered on language revisions. One piece, thank you, one piece was removing parental services. So, as I explained to the education committee, because our school district, I think, is unique compared to some larger districts, where our district has neighborhood schools, you might have three, four, five, 10, K two, five schools. We have one K two, one K five, one K, one, one, two, and then going three, five. So, we don't have to wear a distinct color comparative of the services, because that whole grade level band is within one building, you're not comparing different grades and what the services they are getting. So, this, we should have it in our policy. If we ever change our structure, which I don't think we'll be doing anytime soon, we can add it back in. So, that's not needed within our policy, that's not caught in our board. The next piece then, a little bit over, just subtle language changes, and moving through that, and then also making sure we have for that parent and family member engagement, some strong guidelines to be developed. So, those will then be part of our, and then, right, and a little more thoroughly going through what parent and family engagement is. And as I mentioned, in education, one of my goals this year is to do better with parent and family engagement, and part of that is making sure we have a tighter parent and family engagement structure and guidelines. So, we'll be working with P T O, we're on the calendar for October, to connect with them, and also we've connected any other interested families to work on those guidelines and procedures for our program for Title I. I think, is there anything else you want to add? And then the contact will be going within the edit rate, so that's pretty specific to a portion of the parent and family engagement, so I've been putting that in there, I guess. I think that's it. I was like, I missed some.
Questions for Sarah about this one?
So, the has is in the final, it's on the red line. I have another red line, which should be mine.
I saw it.
Joel asked for one.
Okay, that's right. And if there, this is the first reading, so we need to do a roll call vote on this, if there is a motion to approve this one.
I have one thing, and it's dumb. So, the title, we have a Title I Program and Parent and Family Engagement, I feel like it should say parent and family engagement for Title I Programs, because it makes it sound like it's a policy for Title I and parent and family engagement, but it's not a hill I want to die on, so I just read it a few times, and I went, what? So, that's, that's my only, well, you can tell me to just shh, and I'll be fine, but.
So, can you say what you, if you can just say it again?
Parent and family engagement for Title, for, oh, Title I Programs, that's better.
My only wonder is, it's about Title I Programs, can parent and family engagement? I think the way that would be stated, the way I, why I heard you, I would focus, it would be more with parent and family engagement policy, and it would forget some of the Title I programming points.
But it's all programming, it's all family engagement around Title I, right? The first part of it is all about Title I and not about family engagement.
There's like two different, can you just take out the second hand and put a slash in there?
I've never seen that, then.
But it's still, it's still, it's, it's not, okay, let me get my English out here. So, yes, the first part is about Title I, and the second one is about family engagement, but the engagement is still about Title I. It's not like family engagement about the school district, family engagement about all sorts of other things. This is specifically around Title I family engagement.
You want Title I Programs and Title I Parent and Family Engagement.
What, do you just say related? I've got a program that related parent and family.
Something, because it makes it sound like two separate policies that are smushed together that are not related. And again, I told you, you can tell me to just shh, and I'll just go with it.
And Jessica's related word makes sense, because I was thinking like Title I Programs and it's parent and family, or and the neighbor, or and the associated, like.
So, Title I Programs and related.
Something like qualified.
And related parent and family.
Right, because it's not a policy about family, that can see that your, your, your editor brain is like.
No, then I'm like, related parent, yeah, you are related to, you're related to parents.
You see where my.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand what you're saying, is it, I'm not saying that this would be the title of it, but it would be like Title I Programs, colon, parent and family engagement, is that sort of what you're getting at, or no?
I don't know. It's, it's family, parent and family engagement around Title I, and it's also about Title I, but it's not just parents and family engaging, like, and maybe it's just too many, like, you don't know. Again, if everybody else is fine, I'll shh.
Do you have two lines there, Title I Programs, Title I Programs, Title I Parent and Family Engagement?
Can you just take out parent?
That's what I was going to say.
Say family, you have family.
Title I Programs and Family Engagement.
Yes, the and and.
Yeah, I think that was messy.
I think that's why it's messy, because with the two.
Title I Programs and Family Engagement.
Yeah. Maybe, yeah. Oh, yes.
There's too many ands, and it was thrown in the middle.
Was that a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve, but the title changed.
There you go.
May I have one quick question?
Absolutely.
Sarah, I'm sure that we will, but when you're, you know, developing these specific activities, are we going to talk about those in education?
I wasn't there at the beginning at that point, I probably, I'm not really interested, but I'm just pretty curious, is the.
Yeah, that, I think it's not a good topic, but otherwise, I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion on the table from Leah, the second from Jessica. Need for your discussion. Right, to a roll call called Joel.
Yes.
Leah.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Carly.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Myself as a yes. Motion passes. All right, final action item of the day, considering approval of School Resource Officer memorandum of understanding with the Village Board of Dr. Slair.
Good evening again, board members. Every three years, the Mount Moray School District enters into a review of that School Resource Officer program. We do that annually, but then the third year, we enter into discussions about an extension of our School Resource Officer program. This would be our third iteration of our memorandum of understanding between the Village. I'm pleased to tell you, at the August 6th Village meeting unanimously, the Village Board supports the continuation of the School Resource Officer program. In advance of tonight's meeting, we had a Safety and Wellness Committee meeting, in which I saw many of you, thank you, even if you're not a part of the South Committee, you were still there, and I appreciate your interest, as that was a nice update, our annual review of our School Resource Officer program. We know that the success of that program is not just due to one day, and you know the date to which I'm referring, but all the other kinds of things that go into the Board's power goal of belonging for our young people. And so, we respect for the request that the Board please consider an extension, another three-year memorandum of understanding between the Village. Costs are associated with this and have been allocated at 50% of the school district. In advance of some conversation with a couple of board members, I asked Associate Superintendent of Business and Finance Scott DeYoung, if he could give us an estimation of the approximate cost that was last year or thereabouts.
Yeah, so, last two years, in '23, '24, we paid $57,103, and last year, '24, '25, we paid $60,305.
Happy to answer any questions you may have either about the program, the agreement, or the partnership with the Village.
Did it, oh, I'm sorry, I was, did we change any of the language? It's the same language?
Yes, thank you. I met with Chief Beer at length and talked to him about the language. He didn't see a need to make changes to the language, nor did I, quite frankly. So, it really is basically what it was in 2019 when we started the program. We just changed the dates.
Do, I, sorry that I couldn't get from the Safety and Wellness meetings, I wanted to get an update. This references that they keep track of there in their police system of their, you know, interactions that they record there. Do we know if that system records? I imagine it records, like, specific names, obviously, of students that they would interact with, is that recorded in graphic information about those students as well? Do we know, or can we find out? It's not going to impact my vote, I don't know, but it's, I'd like to understand a little better, because I do think that as we, you know, again, with all of the measuring we do around our student demographics and the interactions that they have with the different programs, I think this is an important one to also monitor.
Well said, thank you. This particularly of interest for us as a district that is working its best to consider equity and avoiding the school to prison pipeline. The school district doesn't necessarily have access to the data itself, but indeed, every police report does indicate V H and the demographic breakdown of the student, if there is some kind of police report drawn. I'm sorry, I can't tell you whether or not I have access to that, but I could find out, and I could get back with you.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, happy to do that.
I have to imagine a lot of it would be, I'm deeply unable to give it to us by the different calls, because some of those calls are, like, one, so, if it's like.
Yeah, I realize. It's going to be that personally identifiable stuff, so we might not be able to get, we might not be able to get it, but we might not actually be able to get it, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, I realize it's a sensitive thing, it can be a sensitive thing, or potentially de-identifying thing, so I certainly don't want to do that. But I do think it's just something that we should keep an eye on, and have a better understanding of all those.
Yeah, thank you for the suggestion. I'll check into it, and get back with you.
Okay. I think that we are incredibly fortunate to have Officer Rose Meyer, in particular, a former educator, who has spent as much time building positive relationships as well as assisting when needed, so.
I have one possible adjustment to this. Section 14, it's letters A through G, but when you look at the list, it goes down to I. So, the reason why we're giving each and I all of that, please hold, that's a certain clause, which went way too fostering a positive.
Oh.
I just thought it was.
I guess words says like, in particular.
Yeah, A through G on priorities.
Probably, you probably added it. Probably when you have.
I forgot to put it at the top part.
And you probably don't like to have seven top priorities, probably.
Probably.
So, thank you. The priorities that were developed were actually that of the task force that were created back in 2019, maybe just a little history lesson for you in this regard. This project was about 20 years remaining with many fits and starts within this community. And thankfully, we just had a different vision for the board, different superintendent, different chief of police, that allowed for us to finally get the ball over the finish line, but there were some, there were some real exchanges that had to happen, and that's where the seven came from, because I'm with you, I mean, talking from a guy who has 49 different objectives and a strategic plan, and, well, I hear you, and so in order for us to get to a yes, that's what we kind of had to do. To this point, though, I'm going to open up the draft and just ask real quick, if I could trouble you, at least tell me where the mistake is at.
So, right in section 14, the second line there, it says letters A through G, but when you look at the list, it goes down to I.
Ah, thank you, I will change that.
I mean, now, assuming we wanted to do all of these, they're on the list.
We're adding things, just to case.
That's what I thought.
Excellent, good catch. Dr. Slair, I had, I don't think that I was part of the discussion three years ago, and I've been out at that point, so I had just like a couple of general questions, just to understand how the arrangement works. The first one was a setback on like the task force plan, so we didn't have anything that we needed to adjust in our S R O policy based off that, right? Okay, we were feeling good about where we're at.
Yeah, thanks for the questions, they're great work, trying to connect the dots.
No. Uh, the, so the hours of our school year for this one, how do we feel about summer coverage, especially, we have summer school and like these large group of kids here, how do we handle that?
Great question, yeah, so what's nice about the arrangement we have is that we can always refer to calling out an officer to come help us if we find ourselves in need. I don't think there's been too, too much that we've had to worry about in the summers.
Okay.
Oftentimes, Officer Rosemeyer is so kind, he tries not to take his vacation during the school year, what a guy, he tries to do that during the summer when he might be on like walk patrol work, um, and therefore we would just call out somebody else who'd be familiar to the, to the children.
Okay.
But I, I'm just looking here to Sarah and Brian, they're kind of nodding affirmatively to me that we really don't have too, too many.
Yeah, she's good, that's good. And then, uh, last one, just on coverage again, he's sick on a given day, someone else come up, the department, is that how that works?
Yeah, great question, so it kind of depends upon, uh, the duration of the leave, if it's more than two or three days, then they definitely have someone come in and fill his role, it's always the same person, which is always very helpful to us, again, for that continuity of, of relationships, but if it's a one-off kind of thing, um, then we might just call someone who's on patrol, okay, work that day, um, and they're always willing to help, you know, we're just fortunate, we have such a wonderful relationship, not only with the village, but also with the school, uh, police department.
It's great. All right, any other, uh, discussion on this one? Otherwise I call for a, a motion to approve.
I made.
You have a motion, you don't have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, motion by Jessica, second by Sarah. Is this one a straight vote?
Oh, this should be a straight vote.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I assume we have no citizen comments, Dr. Slair, but.
That's, that's great.
Any citizens or people wondering? Great, um, and I'm looking forward to our next meetings, um, we have B G T virtually from today at four thirty, and then obviously with Labor Day, we're switched to Tuesday, September second for education, committee at five thirty here, followed by board, education full board, meeting at six thirty. And retain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Sarah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? This meeting is adjourned? Eight oh two. I should say, one more day. It's gonna be a whole. We just talked about both the time issues, like, great, we're just gonna talk a little bit. No, I need to be moved.
Twenty-nine.
I didn't really schedule, I just. I was really gonna.
That's not.